Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We're going to call the city council meeting for Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024, to order. Before we, we will invite up Pastor Tommy Wright from New Jackson Tabernacle Church to lead us in prayer. But before we do that, feel free to come on up, Pastor. No, you're okay. Obviously, a lot of you may have heard that we lost really a pillar in the community in the last 24 hours here with Mr. Vitson Clark, who is the executive director of KCCI and a lot of other things in the community. So before we start prayer, if we could rise and have a moment of silence. Thank you. Pastor Wright?
Mr. Mayor, City Council representative, as we bow our head, we thank God for another day. Thank God for His safety. Lord, we thank You. We want to ask You to give us anything more than what You've given us. First of all, we want to thank You for everything that You've done already. Lord, we come tonight, oh God, as these men and women assemble, oh God, to take care the business of the city. We thank You, Lord. So far, You have given us safety. You protected our officers, people in uniform, and we thank You for that. Help us, oh God, as we remember Pastor Clark, remember his family, remember his legacy. Lord, we just want to say thank You for keeping us. Many of us had been on our sickbeats and things did not look well, but through prayer and seeking You, Lord, You give us another time, another chance to stay in, help us to take full advantage of the time that You've given us. Bless this council, bless this mayor, bless all those, the armor bearers, it helps to run the city, the government. We thank You, Lord, for peace. Even now, continue to bless us and keep us. For, Lord, we thank You for Your goodness, thank You for health and strength, thank You for life, thank You for the celebration, the memorial, remembering those, oh God, that sacrificed so much. Lord, we thank You for You that You have been over us, watching over us, keeping us, watching the city. For Your Word says and tells us, except the Lord, keeper of the city, the watchman watches in vain. So, Lord, we thank You, we bless Your name, because You are a holy God, and You look for us to live a holy and clean, productive life. So, Lord, have Your way. Strength is, oh God, as we come together, oh God, give, continue the leadership, bless our mayor, give him help, give him strength, give him, oh God, even the wisdom of Solomon, oh God, that he may be able to lead the city from higher height and to deeper depth. And, Lord, we won't forget to give Your name the glory, the honor, and praise. In Jesus' name we pray, and the people say, "Amen." God bless you.
The city council will lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will begin with public comment. Please give your name and direct your comments to the mayor. Comments are limited to three minutes. No personal tax upon council members, staff, or other persons in attendance or absent will be permitted. In addition, discussion of matters which are currently under legal review will not be permitted. First up, we have Reverend Dave Robinson.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, all the men. All right, I'm here, you know what I'm here about. Many, many years ago, I attended the school board meetings, and I attended them consistently for probably over two years. And my, my topic was consistently about uniforms. I even compared the cost of these kids dressing up to come to school as against the kids having uniforms and the benefits of the kids having uniforms in relation to preparing for school and, and the cost and the impact upon their lives. Well, over the years, it came to pass that uniforms were brought into the school system and it's still there. This is a different scenario. I've talked about roundabouts, and every time you see me here, I know that comes to your mind, is he going to talk about roundabouts again? Roundabouts are an old thing that's coming back in many major cities across the world. Where I come from, in the island of Trinidad, they just removed a major traffic light and installed a brand-new roundabout with about five different intersections meeting at that roundabout, major traffic intersections. The concept here is that roundabouts save time. There are less accidents at roundabouts, and the cost of maintaining a roundabout is nearly nil. So long as you get it in, it's in. When it compared to the aesthetics of a roundabout and a traffic light, there is no comparison. So I am just suggesting again, I don't know where you'll find the funding, I probably could lend you a couple million dollars, but that will be a high interest. But...
Is that on, do we have that in a minute?
Yes, please put it. I'm talking about Iraqi dollars. But I hope that we would look into it seriously from some form of committee to, to look into how many traffic lights we have, how much time is wasted at those traffic lights, and what it would cost to install a roundabout. In London, or let's go to Indiana, there are roundabouts there, what they have done is just, well, we couldn't do that here, they simply made a circle in the middle of the road, and people grew accustomed to going around that circle without incident. But we're looking at something a little more than that, because people would have a learning curve in our city to understand the metrics of how to drive or navigate around the roundabout. My suggestion to some of the older men already, our first roundabout could be on Evergreen and Maple or Station, where it turns to Station, where there's a traffic light there that just does not serve any really good purpose. So, Mr. Mayor, let's think about it, let's find the money and give it to Mr. Pagash so that he can begin designing these roundabouts in our city that affects us in a very, very positive manner. So, thank you, and may God's blessing be upon all of you. Amen.
Okay, we're going to begin with roll call. If you can tonight, when you do talk, if you don't mind pulling down your microphones when you talk, we've had a lot of people that have kind of emailed and texted in that they're having still a hard time hearing on Channel 4 and different things. It's not because the mics aren't working, but because they're far away. So if you don't, when you speak up, if you can pull that down in front of you. We'll begin with item five, roll calls, council.
Jones. Noble.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Cobb.
Here.
Lewis.
Navarez.
Here.
Marzak.
Present.
Swanson.
Here.
Tally.
Here.
Osingah.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Malone Marshall.
Present.
Prude. Eleven present, three absent.
We do have a quorum, and we do know Alderman Osingah is here. Department ads?
Kidwell.
Here.
LaRoche.
Here.
Kubel.
Present.
Landwear.
Present.
Taylor.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Newton.
Here.
Tagash.
Present.
Nelson. Easley.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here.
King.
Here.
Roswell. Brewer Watson. Thank you.
Next is item six, is there a motion to approve the minutes from August 19th, 2024? So moved, Mayor Curtis. We have a motion from Alderman Osingah, is there a second?
I'll second the motion, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Tally. Is there any questions, comments, changes, or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, roll call.
Noble.
Here.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osingah.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays.
Minutes are approved. We'll move on to item seven, petitions, item seven A.
PB 2024-7-2, an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment to rezone from C2 service commercial to R2 to family residential for 410 North Indiana Avenue, 429 East Locust Street, and 443 Locust Street.
You'll notice on your agenda, there was an item two about a major variance that is not part of the ordinance tonight, that is in your packet, it is only for the zoning amendment only. That variance was handled at the planning commission. Is there a, well, before we go there, and I forgot, so I'm going to say Mr. Hoffman and Director King, and you guys can thumb wrestle, would like to talk, but can you give us an update from the planning commission, please?
Sure, be happy to, Mayor. I'll take this one since this, this one started before Melissa came on board. So this is a rezoning of three fairly small lots, they range in size from about 2,000 square feet to about 4,500 square feet. They've been homes for 50-plus years, something like that, single-family homes, but they're zoned C2. So one of the property owners contacted us, wanted to do some improvements on his property, was concerned about the zoning, wanted to apply himself. We said, "Look, there's a couple adjacent to you, it's the same situation." We had rezoned some just to the west of this not too long ago, so we processed a rezoning for these three. As was mentioned, there was a variance for the one at 443 East Locust to make sure you could rebuild the exact same home, but this is really rezoning these properties from C2 to R2. They would still remain single-family and really could only be used for single-family because of the size of the lot, but this fits the new revised R2 that we created a while back that accommodates both small, single-family lots and larger two-family lots. Planning Commission recommended unanimously to approve this on August 20th, and it's before you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Malone Marshall, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderman Johnson, roll call.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osingah.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Malone Marshall, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderman Johnson. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osingah.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next is item seven B.
PB 2024-7-3, an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment to rezone from industrial or commercial residential zoning for certain properties on North Evergreen Avenue, North Rosewood Avenue, North Wildwood Avenue, East Willow Street, and North Greenwood Avenue.
Mr. Hoffman?
This is another situation where we were contacted by a property owner, this time someone owned a piece of property on Evergreen, he wanted to build a single-family home, it looked like a single-family lot, but it was in fact zoned industrial. We had identified this area previously for rezoning to residential, consistent with the homes that were out there, the configuration of the lots, and just the nature of the location. And so we went ahead and processed this as a rezoning for that area. Some of the, most of the rezoning is to R1, single-family, these lots are pretty decent size and, and mostly above the 7,500 square feet minimum we have for R1. There were a couple situations where we had a small lot or two that we rezoned R2, and I think a couple of duplexes in here as well as a small apartment complex. So it is a variety of R1, R2, and R3, but predominantly R1 zoning for these lots. Planning Commission heard this case on August 20th as well, and was supportive of the rezoning and recommended that to you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Malone, Alderman Malone Marshall, is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second from Alderman Cobb's, roll call.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osingah.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next, we have committees, our communications, item eight A.
A presentation by the Kenkei Police Department introducing new officer Travis Peach.
Chief Kidwell?
So tonight, can you guys hear me? So tonight, I'd like to introduce Travis Peach. Travis, recently graduated from the Police Training Institute in Urbana-Champaign. Comes with a lot of experience. He started at the Jerome Combs Detention Center, and he also, he's, so he's got three years there. He worked at Shapiro Developmental Center, so he's got experience there, which is very beneficial to the police department. He also has a two-year degree from KCC, and I know his fiancee and two children just showed up, so we're happy, and I know they're happy that 16 weeks is behind him, so he was gone for 16 weeks, and now he starts the field training program, so he's still got some work ahead of him, but I know he's glad to be home. Congratulations.
Okay, next is item eight B, but is it a council's, council's pleasure to combine items B, C, D, and E?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Swanson, is there a second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Cobb's to combine items eight, B, C, D, and E. Clerk, can you read those into the record, please?
Sure. Item B, West Side Kenkei Neighborhood Group is requesting street closure of the 600 block of South Enos Avenue between West Calista Street and West River Street to host the West Side Block Party on Saturday, September 7th, 2024, from 1:00 PM until 5:00 PM. Item C, Kenkei High School Student Council is requesting permission to host their homecoming parade on Friday, October 4th, 2024, from 12:45 PM until 2:30 PM. Item D, the City of Kenkei Key and Alderwoman Kelly Johnson are requesting street closure of East Merchant Street from South Skyler Avenue to the depot and surrounding fountain area to host the Mistletoe Market on Saturday, December 14th, 2024, from 8:00 AM until 6:00 PM. And item E, the City of Kenkei Key and Alderman Lance Marzak are requesting permission to host the City of Kenkei Christmas Parade on Saturday, December 14th, 2024, beginning at 4:30 PM.
We have a motion and a second to combine items eight, B, C, D, and E. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osingah.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to approve items eight, eight, I'm sorry, eight, B, C, D, and E?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Swanson, is there a second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Cobb's, any questions or comments regarding the communications? Alderman Barron?
Mayor, I just, could I get a little more information? What's being anticipated with the Mistletoe Market? What is that going to consist of?
I'm gonna ask Alderman Johnson if you can...
Thank you, Alderman Barron.
A little hot seat.
So I am working towards planning a one-day outdoor, I guess, holiday market, similar to, well, on a much smaller scale than like the Kris Kringle Market in Chicago, or a Christmas market, a European Christmas market. So we have some vendors lined up, we have some food trucks coming as well, and some other food vendors, so hopefully it'll be a fun day and do it earlier in the day so folks can come out to the parade later that evening as well, so, or stay for the whole day. And it will run in conjunction with the... Indoor market at the library? Yes, it will run in conjunction with the indoor market at the library, and I believe the Majestic Center has some activities planned as well.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osingah.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays.
Communications are approved. Next is standing committees, item nine eight.
Economic Development for Thursday, June 27th, 2024.
Alderman Cobb's?
Thank you, Mayor.
The regular meeting of the Economic Development Committee of Kenkei City Council was called to order by Vice President, Vice Chair Barron. Shortly, I showed up. On Thursday, June 27th, 5:32, in the city council chambers, there was a quorum present. There were no public comments, and the May minutes were approved. Ms. Brewer Watson provided a report on behalf of ECDA. Ms. Brewer Watson also spoke about eight new businesses since May 1st and business license checklist. With June being a slow month, there were 14 inquiries. Brochure that was presented last month has been put into a package and are being taken to community events. If there are business questions, if there are business questions, please send to ECDA team. Ms. Brewer Watson stated that the incubator project has stalled for now. ECDA is working with CIO program on how the $1,500 grant would help the program stay open and expand to the Hispanic community. ECDA team continues to visit different wards and documenting information to understand how the city can assist business retention. Ms. Brewer Watson also stated many businesses were into a problem of having a plan for succession. The ECDA team will be putting together workshops and educational pieces to assist small businesses. The ECDA team will, will be partnering with KCC, putting together a workshop on artificial intelligence to assist small business. The TIF process has been updated, that now there is software to streamline the process that is automatically scored. The process is now live on the website. Conversations continue about the new grocery store, the city unemployment dropped 2%, but it's still very high comparison. KRS has applied for a transportation grant, but not awarded, but $250,000 were received from the state through cemetery choice and capital dollars. Ms. Brewer Watson gave an update on ongoing, ongoing housing projects, detailed information about these, and other projects can be found on the director's site online. In old business, we discussed 505 South Skyler, which is still in negotiation. QT property requires new plan because I dot, it was found that I dot owns a small piece of the plan. River Edge and River Development Zone updates, the Bill 80801 to allow River Edge Zone and Enterprise Zone to overlap is still in committee, the administration is still moving forward. We also discussed outdoor dining, a draft was shared citywide, I'm waiting on feedback. And in new business, we discussed the India Metals Project, there is a developer that bought multiple properties in the subdivision, and is very serious and has been communicating with the city administration. Upon a motion by Alderman Malone Marshall and second by Alderman Noble, the committee adjourned at 6:44 PM via voice.
Thank you, Alderman Cobb's. Next is item 10, report of officers, item 10 A.
City of Kenkei bills in the amount of $505,143.58.
Is there a motion to approve the bills for the City of Kenkei?
I'll make the motion, Mayor, to approve the bills of the report of officers, let's pay the bills in the amount of $505,143.58.
Is there a second?
Second. In the motion, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Tally. Is there any questions or comments regarding the bills for the City of Kenkei? Seeing none, roll call.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Aye, but I abstain on item 82879, payable to HomeStar Insurance Services for $2,060. And also, item 82880, payable to HomeStar Title Company for $75. Thank you.
Thank you. Baron.
But I would abstain as to check 82885 to Kankakee Ace Hardware, check 82900 to Piggish Engineering Incorporated, and check 82905 to Skyler Avenue Properties to avoid a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays.
Report of officers for the City of Kankakee are approved. Next is item 10B.
Environmental Services Utility Bills in the amount of $328,930.9.
Is there a motion to approve the bills for the ESU?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Swanson. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Osingah. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Nivarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tali.
Aye.
Osingah.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye, but I abstain as to check 35379 to Gordon Electric Supply and check 35390 to Kankakee Ace Hardware to avoid a potential conflict.
Thank you. Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays.
Report of officers for ESU are approved. Item 11, we have no unfinished business. We'll move on to item 12, new business, item 12A.
An ordinance amending Chapter 32, Section 231 entitled Handicap Parking of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee, handicap parking signs established at 1457 South Fifth Avenue.
Not sure if we have a longer, Sox have a longer losing streak, or we do handicap signs every meeting, so we're competing. With that, is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Swanson. Roll call.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Nivarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tali.
Aye.
Osingah.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place the ordinance on final reading for approval tonight?
Aye.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak?
I'm sorry. Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a second from Alderwoman Swanson. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Nivarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Now it's time for an "aye."
Swanson.
Aye.
Tali.
Aye.
Osingah.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next is item 12B. We are going to pull that from the agenda tonight. There is some wording in there and some facts and figures that are wrong in the agreement that we need to have list out and tweaked with legal. And so I have talked to the developers and told them we're gonna pull that tonight and bring it back to you in two weeks on the 16th. There's some corrections that need to be made there of how it was represented to Economic Development Committee and some other things. So we'll pull that and bring that back in two weeks once we get the legal language corrected. Next is item 12C, appointments.
We have Paula Rogers for comptroller.
So back on July 15th, we had promoted our comptroller, now city manager Kubo, to the position, and that leaves obviously a vacancy in the comptroller's seat. After talking with different people, the financial chair, city manager, and myself and different things, in my opinion, I think we have an outstanding candidate right here as our assistant comptroller that can step up to that position. She's been with us for almost two years now, has done dynamic things in putting just so many things with the ESU and just the overall comptroller's office and putting some of the charts together, our liabilities, getting some liabilities that used to maybe be 60, 90 days out are now less than 30 days, the spreadsheets, the compliance and everything there. I think she makes a perfect position to allow a seamless transition that we've got going in the city right now. And so before you tonight, I would like to bring to the City Council for consent and approval, the appointment of Paula Rogers, our assistant comptroller to comptroller for the City of Kankakee. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Chairman, Chairman, I'm sorry, Alderman O'Brien. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second from Alderwoman Swanson. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Nivarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tali.
Aye.
Osingah.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays.
Congratulations, so. We can't say welcome because you're already here. We can say, definitely say congratulations, and it's well-deserved. And I see you got the best seat in the house already, so you, you're a-
Kinda inherited a little.
Thank you for continuing to be part of our team and stepping up for that position. So obviously, we will now provide, we will go out immediately and work with HR, knowing where we're at, and look for an assistant comptroller. We do not want to keep that position vacant very long, so we will start that process here in the next week, seven to 10 days, to get that out to the public and see where we need to go from there, so. Next before you is item 13, motions and resolutions, item 13A.
Resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Kankakee and the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services in connection with supplemental ambulance rates.
Chief LaRoche, would you like to talk about this just real quickly for the council?
Yes, sir. This is our annual agreement that allows us to stay in the GEMT program that allows for greater recovery, some of our costs through ambulance billing. It is done, I think it's been very good for the city to recover as much as we have been through this program. It really is just a regular agreement that every department has to sign off on before they can continue with the program ever again.
Thank you, Chief. This is something we also did a year ago, so we're just doing it on an annual basis, make sure that we keep in compliance, so. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Osingah. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Nivarez. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Nivarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tali.
Aye.
Osingah.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. Next is item 13B. This is a resolution also for some engineering work along Woodley Road for some drainage improvements. We're actually going to pull that also tonight. The Third Ward Alderman want to meet with Piggash Engineering and just go over a couple things and make sure it's in the best inches of the city and how we handle that. So we're gonna pull that tonight and expect that something would come back to you on the next meeting in two weeks. We do have a need for an executive session tonight. Under item 5ILCS122C11, pending or imminent litigation, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second from Alderman, sorry, Alderwoman Johnson. Roll call.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Nivarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tali.
Aye.
Osingah.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays. Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Osinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays.
Okay. Is there a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Cobb's and a second from Alderman Johnson?
Sounds good to me.
With that motion, roll call.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb's?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Osinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays.
Congratulations, so. We can't say welcome because you're already here. But we can say, definitely say congratulations, and it's well deserved. And I see you got the best seat in the House already, so you were...
Kind of inherited a little.
Thank you for continuing to be part of our team and stepping up for that position. So obviously, we will now provide, we will go out immediately and work with HR, knowing where we're at, and look for an assistant comptroller. We do not want to keep that position vacant very long, so we will start that process here in the next week, seven to 10 days, to get that out to the public and see where we need to go from there, so. Next before you is item 13, motions and resolutions. Item 13A.
Resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Kankakee and the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services in connection with supplemental ambulance rates.
Chief LaRoche, would you like to talk about this just real quickly for the council?
Yes, sir. This is our annual agreement that allows us to stay in the GMT program that allows for greater recovery of some of our costs through ambulance billing. It is done, I think it's been very good for the city to recover as much as we have been through this program. It really is just a regular agreement that every department has to sign off on before they can continue with the program every year.
Thank you, Chief. This is something we also did a year ago, so we're just doing it on an annual basis, make sure that we keep in compliance, so. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Osinga. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Navarez. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none? Roll call.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb's?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Osinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. Next is item 13B. This is a resolution also for some engineering work along Woodley Road for some drainage improvements. We're actually going to pull that also tonight. The third ward aldermen want to meet with Pigash Engineering and just go over a couple of things and make sure it's in the best inches of the city and how we handle that. So we're going to pull that tonight and expect that something would come back to you on the next meeting in two weeks. We do have a need for an executive session tonight. Under item 5ILCS122C11, pending or imminent litigation, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second from Alderman, sorry, Alderman Johnson. Roll call.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb's?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Osinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. Next is item 13B. This is a resolution also for some engineering work along Woodley Road for some drainage improvements. We're actually going to pull that also tonight. The third ward aldermen want to meet with Pigash Engineering and just go over a couple of things and make sure it's in the best inches of the city and how we handle that. So we're going to pull that tonight and expect that something would come back to you on the next meeting in two weeks. We do have a need for an executive session tonight. Under item 5ILCS122C11, pending or imminent litigation, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second from Alderman, sorry, Alderman Johnson. Roll call.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb's?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Osinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. Next is item 13B. This is a resolution also for some engineering work along Woodley Road for some drainage improvements. We're actually going to pull that also tonight. The third ward aldermen want to meet with Pigash Engineering and just go over a couple of things and make sure it's in the best inches of the city and how we handle that. So we're going to pull that tonight and expect that something would come back to you on the next meeting in two weeks. We do have a need for an executive session tonight. Under item 5ILCS122C11, pending or imminent litigation, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Cobb's and a second from Alderman Johnson?
Sounds good to me.
With that motion, roll call.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb's?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Osinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays.
We do have a call. There is no action resulting from executive session. We'll move on to city council member comments. Alderman Marzak?
I'd just like to thank Alderman Johnson for stepping up and, you know, putting on the mistletoe market, and I think it's going to be a real good addition to the event on December 14th, which is only 102 days away, which nobody's counting. But, you know, it's in all seriousness, it's a great event, and, I mean, you don't see that many smiles in one place. So I hope we can get a lot of participation in the form of, you know, people viewing it, because you need the viewers and you also need the participants in the parade. So I challenge everybody to try and, you know, get some of their constituents and maybe put together a reward, but, you know, I understand. It's a lot of effort, believe it or not.
It's cold.
Well, not necessarily. I prefer it to be 65 degrees that day, but plenty of hot chocolate.
Alderman Osinga? We will be having public safety tomorrow at 5:30 PM right here. Alderman or Alderman Malone Marshall?
I just want to reiterate that we're having the First Ward Neighborhood Community Back to School Bash on October the 5th. This is a completely donation-driven event. There is no exchange of money on that day. Parents with children that do not have resources will be able to come out, and they will be able to eat, play, and have a nice time in the park with no money being exchanged. They won't have to feel like they are without because nobody will be buying on that day. So we're just asking that people will donate to this event, and we're looking forward to our sixth year.
Thank you, Alderman Osinga. What time does that start officially?
2:00 PM to 6:00 PM at O'Fair Park.
Thank you. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that this coming Monday, a week from yesterday, we have Budget Committee coming up at 5:30.
We're going to, we're going to pull an audible.
Ah.
We need to move that meeting to Tuesday, and I was supposed to call you today, and that's on me. I apologize.
Tuesday, a week from today, 5:30. Here. Thank you.
Are you available?
Hi.
Alderman Baron?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a Community Development Committee meeting at 6 o'clock today and did want to just highlight one item that's going to come to your email inbox pretty quickly here. I mentioned this in the committee report last meeting. ECDA is looking to reform what was previously called the Citizens Advisory Board, what will be called the Community Advisory Board. This is a group made up of residents within Kankakee that is used to advise on a host of things. One of the most important being the Public Service Program, which provides dollars to various nonprofits that provide direct service to people in the community. One of the things they have to do is present to this Community Advisory Board. As part of the reform, ECDA is going to be looking to us as alderpeople to identify one or two individuals within their ward and ask them to apply to be on this, this new board. We heard, we saw tonight at our committee meeting, the application as well as the bylaws that have been proposed. There's a very quick timeline to try to get this approved, so ECDA is going to send out to everybody a copy of those. Our Community Development Committee voted to present this at the next council meeting if possible, but if you have any comments, specific line item edits, you can send those directly to Barbie or to Maya before the September 16th meeting, so that we can get it to the mayor and put it on the council agenda. So be looking for that in your inbox, please.
Alderman Noble?
Yes, I would like to say thank you to the code department for handling the situation in our, not in my ward, but in our community, that over time, it was, the people that were very happy about the resolution of it. And the officers, the entire code department were really professional, so I'd like to say thank you.
Any other alderman comments? Alderman Johnson?
We will be meeting this Thursday for license and franchise at 5:30.
Department head comments?
I have one, Mayor.
Chief Kidwell?
Yes, the police department, for the next 20 days, we're still accepting applications for a police officer. The link's available on our Facebook account, so I encourage anybody to apply. If you know somebody that wants to be a police officer, especially from the community, we'd appreciate your support and get him up there to take the test, so thank you.
Any other department heads?
No.
Okay. We'll go on to mayor comments. I just have a couple. Kind of talking about ward positions, we still do need some for the planning board. We've had, not that it can't be anywhere within the city of Kankakee, but we'd like to have a planning board that is well-rounded within the geographical area of the city. So we're kind of, again, it doesn't have to be first ward, seventh ward, or fifth ward, but that's kind of some areas where somebody in that, those wards would be a good fit for the planning board so that we don't have five or six alderperson, or, I'm sorry, planning commission people on a 10-block radius making decisions for the whole citywide. But I do know that Mr. Hoffman's been asking for that for a while, so I'm open to any ideas that you might have if you can forward that to my office, because we do need to get those seats filled. And we have two right now vacant? Just one? Oh, good, okay. Why was I thinking two? Okay, we just need one then. I'd like to just talk real quick. The regatta this past weekend, it, for the first time, I'm bringing it back in 11 years. I will say, overall, we're very happy of how it came off. We do know there's some tweaks and some things that we can correct to make it much better next year, but overall, for, for a lot of new volunteers, a lot of new people stepping up to the plate to pull this off, it's a lot of work, and it was, it came off very well. During the day of the actual boat races, Saturday was very well-attended. Sunday was probably about a 30% increase along the shorelines, and so that came off. The most important thing is the racers that were here from across the country were elated. Every single one of them said they are glad to be back in Kankakee, and they're going to go back and talk to their fellow racers from across the country. I did talk to the promoter who was here for this one. He said he's headed to San Diego, I think, next week for the next race that he'll be putting on. So it truly is a cross-country effort that they do, but they said they'll be talking to everybody to try and get the number of boats even doubled or more coming in next year and get it back to what it was at one point. Potentially maybe even able to get nationals back here. That's not an easy task. Once you lose it, somebody else doesn't want to give it up, but that's an effort that they want to do. And in talking to the promoter, his goal is to make it bigger and better next year. He wants to bring in more sponsorships from outside the community to help with it, potentially even bringing in jumbotrons to help the crowd understand who's in what places it goes along, and there's a lot of other things. But I just want to say thank you to all the entities who are involved, and in particular, I do want to thank the Kankakee Valley Park District. Dana Heights and her team did a phenomenal job. You know, the city got a lot of recognition out of it, and sometimes I feel like they didn't get the recognition that they should because their team and their staff worked tirelessly the last two weeks putting it on, along with our team here. And I'll talk about them in a second, but they, they were really good in being out there all weekend, making sure everything came off really well, so they need to get a, a lot of kudos when you see them. From our departments here, I can't say enough about everybody that stepped up here. Zach and his team, along with our Kyle and Eric, DPW with James and Frank, setting up everything and doing that there. We also had George Ryan Jr. and Lisa Dugan. Without them chasing the sponsorships, I don't know we would have got the numbers that we got, and that was a big deal. And then a couple of people that really stepped up. Bill Yanka came and talked to me about, six weeks ago, and said, "Listen, has anybody thought about the little things, about garbage, about who's collecting at the parking gates, who's doing all those things that you normally don't think about?" And asked, "Could he just step up and help as a volunteer?" And he did. And he sort of had experience with Murpham Street Music Fest, and so he took some of those qualities and brought it on. David Guzman in my office, he's, he really stepped up big in the last few days, actually, last several weeks, going to the meetings and getting everything put together. Wade and the IT team were doing their social media and some of their live broadcasts. And our city manager, she didn't get Labor Day weekend off this year. She went and helped out with the collection of money with the park district on Saturday and Sunday. So there was a lot of effort all the way around, and I could talk a long time about it, but really proud of the community, of all the partnerships that came together. And it's really, as we said, when we made this event come back, we made sure it said Kankakee River Valley, because it is a countywide effort. It is a thing such as the city of Kankakee. It's, it's all the six entities that came together to pull that off. So while there are some little tweaks and things that can be done, and we've heard some of those on social media, I will tell you, I think about 98% of people were over the top thrilled of what happened on that river and what happened the last two to three days. So kudos to everyone involved there. Also, I just kind of want to mention real quick, we did open last Tuesday the bids for the East River Walk. The reason we didn't bring that tonight is a lot was happening last week with the regatta, with the bids, with a few of the other things. Each, the bids came in, and there's 10 alternates that we have to look at and decide. The team just needs to have some time this week to finalize those numbers, look them all over, and make sure what is the best option, and who is the actual low bidder with the alternates in place, and we'll bring that, bring that to everybody, to council. We'll send some emails out to you, and we expect that within the next two weeks, we'll have that all figured out and a plan to move forward to you with. So it just, it wasn't that, we just, we needed more time. Once we opened those on Tuesday, by the time Friday hit and the regatta was here, I'll be quite frank, it was, it was all hands on deck for that and a lot of other things happening in the city, so. So we're excited on working on that. I just wanted to give you an update there, and we'll have some information out to you hopefully by the end of the week on that. That's all I have for tonight. I expect the next meeting on the 16th. We'll have a little more to it, probably a little more robust with some ordinances and resolutions that we need to approve. So being that it is not even 8 o'clock yet, it's 7:58, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Tally?
Second.
Second from Alderman Malone Marshall. All in favor?
Aye.